Can I have a motion away the reading of the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion away of the reading of the minutes from 5:24.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed, so move. We have a couple six-month extensions here. ZB A case 2143, Margaret LaForest, 50 Winthrop Street, on a subdivision. She wants to get a six-month extension on that property. If we could have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant a six-month extension for Margaret LaForest, 50 Winthrop Street of Quincy for a variance to subdivide into two lots and construct a single-family home on the newly created violation of Title 17 as amended, Chapter 4.1.1 and Chapter 8.1.9 on the premise number 50 Winthrop Street, Quincy.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed, so move. One more.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant a six-month extension in regards to Margaret LaForest, 44 Winthrop Street in Quincy for a variance, special permit floodplain to construct a single-family home on the newly created lot in violation of Title 17 as amended, Chapter 4.1.1, Chapter 5.1.4, and Chapter 8.1.9 on the premise number 44 Winthrop Street in Quincy.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so move. I have a... Someone wants to move tonight's meeting to 90 School Street. It's...
2235.
2235. They want to move it to July 12th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on ZB A 2235 Bad Bus Inc., Steve Guard for variance special permit, 90 School Street. I make a motion to move that to, what was it, 7/12?
7/12.
July 12th.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so move.
The Budbus, creative name.
I know old business. ZB A 2219, 190 Washington Street LLC for variance to remove the structure at 190, 192, 196 Washington Street in order to construct nine multi-townhouses on the premise number 190 Washington Street. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So we were here before you on May 10th. This is a continued hearing, and I have with me my client, the applicant, Peter Koganlu, engineer and the architect. Specifically, what the board requested was an additional two feet of turning radius. So what we did was we did what the board requested. We amended the plans. Those should be before you tonight. What... And Chi can speak to this a little bit in more detail if he needs to, but the garage doors for each unit were pulled back two feet, and then that created more space for the tandem parking in front of the garage. And then the site access drive, as a result of that, was widened by two feet. And so now we're at the 24-foot turning radius, so that variance would drop, so we would only be requesting a variance for three items.
All right. And where'd you take the other two feet, on the left?
So the garage.
Garage doors, yeah.
Pushed back. So the building was always overhanging, but we put it a pushback.
Right. And you took two more feet somewhere else, you said?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, the island was pushed back two feet as well, so we have a 24-foot.
So you push them back. Any questions?
None.
No? Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak on that? I know we just want them to do this, but if anyone have any comments, either for or against, I'll take it now. First call, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave McCarthy, 48 Whitney Road, Ward 1 Counselor. A vast improvement, as we know, that area was in tough shape over the... Settles Glass, I think that Settles Glass area, all the way back. I support the project, but at the same time, I still like the idea of eight units. I know we had gone back and forth. I was in with planning a lot. I know I talked to these gentlemen. It gave us plenty of room at the end. I know they pulled themselves out of the flood area, but the eight units gave them a lot more room in regards to maneuverability for parking for snow in that back area towards the town Brook. So I would have loved to seen eight units. I know I went back to the planning and asked them, and they had said that they were sticking with their nine units. And the nine units are fine, but it looks like they've shrunk them down. They're very narrow to get nine in. I was hoping they're going to go to eight and, you know, make up whatever they wanted to do in money in regards to those eight units instead of nine to give them some flexibility. So I just want to go on record that I was really leaning towards that eight because of the maneuverability they have. It's very similar to the units that are right down there now, and I know that they've had issues with snow removal in regards to, you know, the way that it's lined up. So that's all I want to say. I'm glad they're cleaning up the area. I'm glad they stepped up. I mean, that provided area down there, but at the same time, I wish they had stuck to eight. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Is there anyone else have any comments? Second call? Third call? Oh, none?
You didn't really say for or against, so I was confused, so...
I didn't, because we already had a hearing, and the only thing we asked them to do is do that. I usually don't even let the public speak, but the council wants to speak, and I said, you know what?
That's why I'm confused, okay?
Someone wants to say something, you're right.
I want to thank you very much, though.
And I said, oh, because they're moving two feet each way.
I mean, I just want to say that it's, you know, let's say in a scale of one to 10, I was just talking to Counsel McCarthy about something else. Let's say before this was, if one being the worst, this project was, say, a one, that I would say.
We know what one to 10 is, John.
This is now like a two. They've modified this project like five or six times, and they barely did anything. A good idea, if you are going to get eight units, you could split it up into two buildings of four and make some little green space in the middle. The problem is, there's no place to play. Washington plays, you know, unless all these people are going to become professional skateboard people in the skateboard park, there's really not much else to do over there. So I mean, it's, you know, Quincy's about the only place where I see these long buildings. Most other places build either single families or duplexes. For some reason, we are the one city that allow developers to squeeze as many places in there, and it's basically time to stop doing that, you know, and making stuff that people really want. Because personally, myself, I want more green space there. You know, I wouldn't want to live there. I think the people who are going to live there, I don't see any place for the snow when it happens. I don't see proper... How's a fire truck get all the way in there and stuff? That's just not really cool.
Easy, John. That's why we made him move it.
Well, like I said, I mean...
We get a fire truck in there without maneuver...
I think the whole design should be, you know, like I said, it's like fitting a circle into a square peg.
No, it's, that's your opinion.
Okay.
Your opinion.
Okay. So maybe, you're right. It might be a triangle into a square. I'm not sure which one. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Last call? Well, I found a hearing close. I'll be voting in favor, nine units.
I'm in favor, Matt.
In favor.
The last hearing, I think, that I opposed a nine, and I want it to see eight. And I still look at the project. I do believe that, you know, it would be a better project for me, so I would vote.
We did talk about that, and then you said, when we talked about it, you want the two feet and the two feet, but you settled for that. I thought you said yes, but maybe I was mistaken.
I'll be in favor.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZB A 22-19, 190 Washington Street LLC for a variance to remove the structures located at 190, 192, and 196 Washington Street in order to construct a nine-unit multifamily townhouse on the premise number 190 Washington Street, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed?
Closed.
Closed, Mr. Chairman. That's 41. Thank you.
Thank you.
President of the tonight, ZB A 2227, 609 Washington Street LLC for finding to extend the business use of the premises by converting the second floor from residential use to commercial use and construct a roof deck on the flat roof section of the building along with the patio and the front lawn area for outside seating on the premises 609 Washington Street. Applicant, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Edward Fleming here on behalf of the applicant. I'm also joined by Duan Nguyen, who's here tonight, who's the applicant. Last hearing, there were two matters that the board asked that we address. One was to eliminate the roof deck, which we've done, and the second was to obtain a five-year lease, which we've also obtained, and I provided those to the board for tonight's hearing. I believe that the board indicated that otherwise, the board seemed to be in favor of moving this matter forward. So those are the only changes that we've made to this application.
And, you know, I think looking at that, the way the board looked at it was outside at night.
Yep.
It's just, I think it was too much for that area. I think the board said the same. Couple come up with an idea, we could maybe get away, get rid of that roof truck and then come back. And, you know, the front patio, I guess... I don't know. How many did you have for the front patio out there?
It's very small, only ten...
It's like four or something?
Yeah, ten people.
Yeah, ten people.
And that's exactly what my client agreed to do, that after a couple of years, if that's something she wants to pursue, she'll come back and request permission of the board at that time.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just hours of operation?
You had hours of operation, I know we're until 1:00.
Okay.
And the outside had a limit, I think, till 10:00, so the folks that are outside will be asked to come inside.
Thanks.
And then we get rid of the roof.
Yeah, no, I was just...
Good.
It was 5:00 to 2:00, so I was wondering if anyone in that new...
Mr. Chairman?
No question.
So, Brian?
No, I'm good.
All right. I think we've done what we've asked them to do, and I'll be voting in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Likewise.
Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, case number ZB A 22-27, 609 Washington Street LLC for finding variance to extend the business use of the premise by converting the second floor of the premise from residential use to commercial use. No roof deck, correct, right?
No roof deck.
Along with the patio, patio's okay still?
Yeah.
Patio with the front lawn area for outside seating on the premise number 609 Washington Street, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the finding variance.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed, so move.
That's the only one I didn't have for some reason.
Thanks, counsel.
I had the old agenda, so I didn't have that one. I'm good.
Oh, okay. There's one thing where I really...
We move Budbus. Creative name. I like the name.
Budbus.
I mean, if you're going to start a business, at least come up with a creative name, and they hit that one.
I'm in a new business, ZB A 2234. Langello HO Hope for a short-term rental special permit to allow the premises to be used for a short-term rental property on the premises 307 Water Street. Name and address for the reference.
Hi, my name is Langello, and my neighbors know me by Lenge. My address is 307 Water Street, Quincy, Mass.
Okay.
02169.
You have the floor, sir. Explain why you want this to happen.
Okay, I...
Why it should happen.
I work for catering company Max Ultimate Food for 12 years. 2020, I got a mass email that we were off our load, and it's been really tough for the past few years, and there's hardly any money coming in. So I suffer, it's so tough that I have suffered depressions and anxiety because I scared to lose my home. So I gained a lot of weight, 35 pounds, and then it's been this past years that when the work starting to come back, I lost the weight. So this is the only options I have at this moment, although I just don't have any more fun to...
When you say short-term lease, what are you talking about?
I'm using AB and B as a five... I do, right now I'm doing a five-night minimal, and I live there, so I share the homes with someone, and I already have the certificate, X I S tax certificate, and I have with me, and I also print out my 2020 income at W2, and I also print out my 2021 W2, and I also print out my latest pay stub as of last week, and I also have my mortgage payment with me, so...
So you want to turn it into an AB and B for the second floor?
The sharing one and also the second floor.
You're going to share both floors?
Yes. And I live there.
And I'll tell you how I feel, though.
Okay.
And if maybe the board, we could put this off for a couple of weeks to really look into it. I didn't know it was turning into AB and B. If I was turning it into a weekly rental, it's just, anyway. But you live right beside a school, and I know if I lived in that neighborhood, I wouldn't want nothing to do with that. You don't know who's coming in your house or what, and for how long, and are you going to quarry everyone that does it, that rents your place? I don't know. I know I wouldn't, being a citizen of the city. Who's going in that property? You live right beside a school. Yard gate and the school property is together.
That is correct.
And that's the only thing that, to me, I worry about.
Right.
I don't know who's going in your property for two days, one night, two nights.
Well, I usually, I only approve the rentals if they have reviews as well, and I only...
You can have all the reviews in the world. Hear what I'm saying? It has nothing to do with reviews, that he was a good guy over here, good guy over there, good guy there. What's the guy like? What's the woman like? What's the people like? I mean, is anyone... I don't know who's checking these people on AB and B. In fact, I got to talk to the counselor tonight, so, about a problem in our neighborhood that we have still, so, just don't stop. No one's stopping, so...
Well, the people are usually very nice, and they have...
Oh, I know that. You know what I'm saying? 99%, 99.9 probably are, but the way I feel about it personally, even in a school district, I don't know. But I would like some time...
I mean, I have...
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
I have no problem offering. Look, I'm just confused that, so, it's a two-family?
It's a two-family, so I rent...
So you have a long-term tenant?
I had a long-term tenant, two long-term tenants before, and what happened was that they didn't care for the properties, and they invited... They lived there for a year, and then they brought a lot of mouths into the house.
Okay.
They don't clean, and I'm an artist, so I clean up. So this is also a way for me to have my home the way that I had it.
Okay.
I bought the house in 2014. It took me a year and a half to save enough money to renovate the house, to get it into stud, and have everything inspected and sign off by every department to do this.
Okay.
And I have had long-term tenants, it's just that they don't care for the properties.
So going forward, you want one unit will be fully rented on a short-term basis?
Mm-hmm.
And you're also renting a bedroom in your...
Yeah, it's a sharing with me, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so I live here, so it's not...
Yeah, I was just confused as to what it was. I didn't know if it was just the second unit.
So it's only, it's only...
I'm a confused too, because you said you're going to do both units. You're going to rent in both units.
But he's still going to live in there.
I live there.
You're still going to live there, but you're going to rent in both units.
Correct.
Yes.
So you're going to make an AB and B out of the whole house.
Right.
Except L B, still living.
You'll still be living there, but it's still an AB and B, the whole house, okay?
That was my, I was just confused. I didn't know if it was just a single...
And I thought he said whole units, he was going to do that.
Yeah, I didn't know. Questions?
I mean, it's next to a school, elementary school. It's across the street from a brand-new park, and it's across the street from elderly housing. I don't like the idea.
I don't either, but I think I should...
What were you getting for rent for the apartment?
13 hundred, so it's not enough.
It's going to be the cheapest apartment in Quincy at this point.
Yeah, but it's, that's why it's not enough to cover the bills at the moment.
Why don't you just raise the rent?
I just don't have enough, I just don't have enough work from...
Why don't you raise the rent?
Huh?
Why don't you raise the rent?
It's just, I, it's just, currently, I went back to work at my catering company, and I don't have enough work for, to even cover enough rent, even if I raise the rent. So I print out how much I make this year.
You thought about selling the property?
Well, if I sell the property, I will not be able to afford anything in Quincy. I live in Quincy for 40 years. I want to die here. I don't want to, I mean, I will be forced to live somewhere that I don't want to live.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Brian, I know, I know. That's what I'm saying. That's what I wanted, just to have a couple of weeks to talk. Mr. Chairman, questions for me?
I'm just a little bit confused about the application, because we haven't had this come before.
No, no.
So there's a new ordinance in the city of Quincy, and I think this is tied to the new ordinance. That's what Marty and I are talking about. I don't know if it's something that every one of these from now on is supposed to come in front of us, like...
Short-term rental.
Short-term rental, right.
I see.
Which, well, that's what I'm saying. This is going, this would be, and get it approved, I think. We should look, we should look a lot more into...
What's happening.
And what the rules are as far as school is.
I know, but we still want to look at it.
You know what I mean? It's like drug-free place, is it, you know, I mean, really, pedophile-free place.
Right.
I mean, you got a school right there, you got a park right there.
I don't know if you can quarry even a tenant, though.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if someone's a registered sex offender, but they rent an AB and B, who's going to find out? How do we all know? Those are the things I want to know before I put my stamp on anything.
Does Mr. Duca have some information on that he could share?
Oh, I don't know. Mr. Duca, here he is. Mr. Duca!
Before you get... Sorry, I'm leaving.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Now it's up to you, Mr. Duca.
Can I just, I say something?
Sure. Go ahead.
We want you to know, we're not single on you, out and picking on you and jumping at you.
No, I understand. I also want, I also wanted to say that I'm really working really hard to try to get myself out of this situation.
See, we have questions regarding the procedure and process that this is all of a sudden just keep going, okay? So, again, it's not personal, and we're not, you know, we're just trying to resolve among ourselves with some...
Right, it has nothing at all to do with it.
And maybe, I don't see where we fit. In other words, we usually sit here for a variance, which is something that the property is...
Yeah, it's a special permit. We have, we're going to have to do every single one of these.
And anything that we rule on...
It's going to come up every year to get a re...
Everything kind of re-ruling has to have a hardship. Usually those hardships are in the land, not in finance, because we reject stuff on financial business.
Okay.
In general, okay? But again, it's not, it's not personal, okay? We're just trying to sort the whole stuff.
Right, I just, I got the application to apply. That's why I have to apply, yeah.
We, you're probably right, but, you know, we have no idea.
Mr. Duca, and you want to add anything to this?
Yes.
Yeah.
We got six in waiting, so you know.
We have six of these today?
Six, no, no, no. Six in waiting.
We will.
Six in the queue.
Thank you, board members. For the record, Jay Duca, Director of Inspection Services. Just a short, how we got here today is, the council, city council initially put this in the municipal code back in April of last year. In September of last year, they decided to insert it into the zoning ordinance as well. I believe, I see Counsel McCarthy's here, he can explain a little more about that, but I, I think part of the reason for that was to allow the neighbors to have some comment to not, you know, maybe not be surprised by it. They made it a special permit in all districts. It's forbidden in residence A districts, so it's allowed use in these districts with a special permit. Most of the work that is done before it gets here is, we vet it out to make sure, there's a lot of requirements that we have to look at, whether the person lives at the unit, we have to check certain records. If it gets a special permit from this board, the police have to comment on it, they'll do a background check, fire department goes in the building, health department goes in the building, we go in the building. There's a lot of steps involved. It's a long process for an applicant who's trying to do the right thing, who is trying to register with the city. We've identified approximately 160 operators in the city. We use a software called Host Compliance that monitors 85 different social media sites and advertisements that we use to identify these sites. We also probably have about 30 that are not verified yet, but Host Compliance has verified 150 or so. So we sent a lot of letters out, violation letters to those in residence A. We've sent letters to people who identified in other districts, such as this gentleman here tonight. So it's a special permit, people here. That's where we're at today. I know the counselor might have some other, something to say on behalf of the council, but that's what I can tell you today.
Does it say anything about AB and B within a school district, or 300 feet or anything?
Nothing. There is, there is no, nothing in that, that, it's silent on that, anything that has to do with that. Just, it's a billion-dollar industry.
Yeah, I know.
This is what the council, this is the rules that they come up with, and I'm just here to tell you, you know, what the rules are.
And then we're taking, but here's, here's what, to me, here's what I see. I see anyone with a two-family, zone B, turn his house into an AB and B, and rent it out, rent it out, rent it out, and the neighborhoods, to me, don't become a neighborhood anymore because they all do it, they just buy it through family and neighborhood.
Part of the rules and regulations, Mr. Chairman, is that you have to live there? The owner has to live in the building.
I know, he can live there, but, you know, I don't. I just feel differently all about that.
You said you sent out 150 notice, so this gentleman complied with the notice?
Correct.
Is that the first one we've seen that complied with the notice?
This is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's just what...
We have 27 that have applied for registration.
Okay.
We're vetting out, uh, a lot of them right now before they even come here.
Okay.
Um, so this is.
Because they probably don't own it.
Uh, yeah, we check the deeds. There's a lot we have to do as far as the ordinance is concerned, uh, which we're doing, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of work.
Thanks.
Checking, checking, just checking.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If, 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 if and when we grant these.
Yep.
Do they run consecutively with the property regardless of the owner? Does every owner have to come back?
Uh, we have, they have to register, re-register every year. We have to check all the paperwork again, but they will not have to come back for a special permit.
About that next door?
If the, if they changes, if the ownership changes, they have to re-register and they have, the new owner has to come in and register.
So when we're granting, they're going to do this for one year before you do a follow-up?
Right.
And then you do a follow-up every year?
Yes, they have to re-register.
And then that property on our whole site?
Yes, for the property has to be registered every year on the date of we, when we register the property for the first time, every year there has to be re-registered. It will check all the documents again to make sure that the owner lives there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, Jay, will the, the chain of ownership doesn't?
Yes, it does.
Bring it, brings it back here?
That would, a chain, a change of ownership would have to, uh, have a new application and a new registration.
Okay.
Because they probably don't live there, no? Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Counselor, you have a few words?
Yeah, just a couple of words, and I want to thank Mr. Duka, um, for covering that. Um, when the Airbnb's kind of came out of nowhere a few years back, you know, all of a sudden they were showing up. I'll speak for Ward One. Uh, I know we've had conversations. Uh, there were three or four down there that all of a sudden showed up, and, um, uh, three out of the four probably abused it, um, really bad, uh, right off the bat. So, uh, you know, we went down and had a little chat. Uh, we hunted down the owner of the, uh, of the house and, um, kind of put the brakes on everything. Everybody kind of stopped for a second. I totally agree with, with the zones comments about school, about parks, and this ordinance that was really, um, myself, uh, Council Harris and Council Phelan had, had issues, they had issues in Ward Five and Ward Six and, and Ward One. Where predominantly down in Ward One and, and Ward Six, it's, it's rez A.
Right.
So we went, we went in, we had a long discussion, all the councils, about starting with rez A, at least banning it from rez A, getting it out of the single-family homes. Um, and then, um, you know, I, I, you know, I, I assume, uh, after a conversation tonight, you know, we'll, we'll take another look at it. But that was the start, to kind of put the brakes on the Airbnb by, by aiming it at rez A off the bat. I don't remember ever having one up here as long as I've been up here about a short-term rental-type permit request. In fact, I got another call from someone else in the Marymount area asking the same question. It's, it's going to be the same, uh, request coming from a, a home there. So I, I, um, I got to talk to Mr. Duka a little bit about that. Um, but I know that I can bring back to the council, uh, thoughts, uh, from the board and talk to Mr. Duka about tweaking that in regards to what it's near. And then also rez A, B, you know, where we are in the city, you know, your, your West Quincy's, your Point, uh, in different sections have a lot more Resident B and a lot more, uh, two families and three families than, than some of the ones that I had to deal with. But I think we have to probably tweak it a little bit harder, uh, to get control now. There's a lot of work for Mr. Duka. We'll probably have to request another Inspeccial Services guy in the budget, uh, next year, but, uh, well worth it, uh, to keep an eye on this because, because it is. And a lot of people are on the up and up, and then a lot of people aren't. And, and you run into it, and then a neighbor calls up and says, I haven't seen Marty Akins in six months, but there's somebody over there. Uh, and, and then it begins. So, um, uh, it, it's something I think, a work in progress. It's, it started though, and, and we got a good jump on it with rez A, uh, but now I think we got to look at the other rez's because, um, you know, you folks are going to have, have these questions, which are, which are all good.
Right, and we have two families in rez A.
Yes, we do.
But they're not going to get a, a B, an A B.
Yeah, there's legacy rez, rez B-type situations in the wards that happened before zoning became zoning.
Right, before zoning was, right.
So, uh, you know, we'll go back and take a look at it, but I, I love the idea of, of taking a step back and, um, uh, thinking about how to go forward with this because, uh, you know, you'll, you'll, again, kind of open up the door and you'll have a lot of this.
Oh, right.
You know, so, and, and with, with rules that I think that are pretty good, if we pull the ordinance, they're, they're, they're pretty laid out. Jay did a pretty good job.
Right.
Uh, you know, you can take a look at it, everyone, we'll get a copy to everyone and, and take a look at it, and then, uh, but, but I think it probably can be tightened a little bit, and we have to look at the other rez's. I, my preference was no Airbnbs at all, but a lot of people didn't like that because there were people that, you know, needed it for, for different financial reasons, and I didn't want to have any Airbnbs infiltrated, but, but that didn't work, so I settled for rez A for now. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Want to take a comment period at least?
Yeah, we'll go through that. If, if there's anyone, yeah, I'll say, you can have a seat there. If there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of this, you can step forward. Anyone who wants to, first call, second call, third call closed, correspondents. I have a letter here from DPW, May twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two, three oh seven Water Street, case number ZB eight, twenty-two, thirty-four. We review this merely above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided on this issue? Want to speak? First call, second call. Anyone want to speak?
Yes.
Oh. All right, wait until you get to the mic, please. You want to take me if you have name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Yolanda Mikel. I'm, I live at three oh one Water Street, and this is my neighbor. And I know that he's been really good. He keeps his property very clean.
He does, very much so.
Very, very clean. And all the people who have King there, I had no issues with. They all waved hello to me. They all respected me, and we have no issues with it at all. So, um, I really think that that was a good idea for him to, for the financial reason, to help him out. And I think.
You're in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Last call.
I'll say one, sorry.
Here we go, Johnny.
John Rutherford, sixty-two Grandwall Road. I have not, um, first question, this is residential A?
B.
No, it's B.
Oh, this is in residential B?
Yes.
Okay, so that really screws up my comment because, because my, my comment, my comment had to do with that, like.
It's, it's a good comment.
I mean, I, I would think that if you're in residential B and he has a two-family.
Yeah.
So I think he has the right to rent at least one of those floors however he wants because he's, it's, he's a two-family. So some people, the new thing it is, maybe you make more money from Airbnb than you do from giving it to a tenant, and right now, um, it's, you know, we just went through COVID and it's some people.
Residential B, so the comments, I don't care how he makes.
No, but when I, when I was, when I was listening to the, when I was listening to the applicant, basically, it sounds like he's been terrorized by previous tenants, and so this is a way for him to live peacefully and not be depressed. So, I mean, I'm for people to be happy, so.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Last call, all of our hearing closed. If I could, uh, I would like to spend a couple of weeks, me and the, uh, vice chair, and just look at this statue a little better, and then we come back and just vote on it.
I have, I have, I have one comment here.
Sure.
If we're changing the way that we approve any requests.
Yeah.
To consider financial issues.
That's what I'm saying, too.
Then every time that somebody comes to us with a financial issue, saying, oh, I need this for.
Well, and that's not the reason we would do this. It wouldn't be because he said he needs money.
No, no, no.
He has, I know exactly what you're saying, because that's the first reason I would say no. Just because you, you don't have enough money is not a good reason to rent your house out.
Well, there're different, there're different rules.
But now the rules are, rules are what they are.
No, I know, but I'm just, I mean.
I know exactly what you're saying, right, right. Don't get on that rule.
But that's going to be, I mean, that's everybody's implication that's ever going to come up with any one of these.
But they're not going to say it that way. They're just going to say, I got a right to rent. I, I, I just want to do it.
And no, I won't be there, but every time we get a subdivision or something like that, somebody's going to walk in and say, you know, I need the money.
Well, that's right. I don't think the council considers what the zoning board does. No offense, council. I mean, I, I, I understand the implications of a comment period because I think that we've heard that from many people and coming up where they're proposing a new home. We've heard repeatedly, oh, they're just going to rent it out. It's just going to be short-term rental.
Exactly, rejection dominant, dominant next last month.
And they sell it, they sell it a month later. That's fine, that's, that's.
Which is hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just, because I need more money.
Right.
But I, and I, I will say, I just want to, I mean, I'm only going to, I'll say this for all of us to think about. I, I commend the applicant for being the first. It sounds like we've been notifying people for months and.
Right.
And, and this poor gentleman's falling on the sword for us, so.
And, and I will say, it's property gorgeous.
Oh, yeah.
Really gorgeous. The front, the side.
Well, you're right. Jay sent a hundred and fifty letters, and only twenty-seven applicants returned.
So far. Until, like, it's not getting approved, then all of a sudden the board will get up. Special permit, man. I clear motion to, uh, uh, hate to say, but.
The twenty-eighth?
Fourteen, really, because, well, but, twelve, twelve.
Because the chances we have a meeting on the twenty-eighth are, are getting slimmer.
Slumber and slumber.
Yeah.
Man, and four, maybe four or five, so it's ten, maybe ten cases already, twenty-eight. And I'm not going to be here in, uh, Mr. Chin, you're not going to be here the twenty-eighth?
Oh, we'll not be here.
I won't be here either.
Okay.
Um, but we got a problem.
You can vote twice.
We'll see.
So do you.
We'll just deal with that. We'll deal with that when we get there. You can run on four, as long as you.
So we're, we're going to have, we're going to take a few weeks to, to review the ordinance, the new ordinance, because this is, like I said, this unfortunately, you're the first case that we've seen. So, um, we're going to take a few weeks.
July twelfth.
And the next ca, the next meeting we're having, we, we, we have a June twenty-eighth meeting, but chances are it won't, it's going to be canceled because we don't have enough members. So July twelfth will be the meeting. Are you available to come back on the twelfth?
Um, will I get a letter?
No, and you won't even have to come. We're just going to vote on it. That's it.
Yeah, there'll be no additional testimony. We'll just vote on it.
Everything, everything's closed.
Since you're mine, do I?
Twelve.
Right, twelve.
Okay, uh, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Your priority.
You'll be number one, right up top, so.
Right up top.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pedro Nocia.
Case number ZB eight, twenty-two dash thirty-four, Landelo Ho, for a short-term rental special permit to allow the premises to be used as a short-term rental property on the premise number three oh seven Water Street Quincy. I make a motion to move that hearing to seven, twelve.
Okay. On the motion, seeing that all favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, so move. Reverend on tonight's agenda, ZB eight, twenty-two, thirty-nine, Alfred Peachey for a variance finding to subdivide the four lots and the two lots, keeping the existing single-family home on one lot and constructing a new single-family home on the newly created lot on the premise number twelve, Adeline Road, Adeline Place. Applicant, the council, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, great to see you in person. You all look, you all look good in person. Um, nice to be back. Again, my name is Attorney Rob Fleming from Fleming &amp; Fleming. I do represent the applicant here. Um, both Alfred and Robert Peachey, they're trustees of Ten Adeline Realty Trust, the owner of the property. Um, with me this evening are Mr. Ed Roach, Mr. Gavin Driscoll of Lighthouse Architects. They are the architects, um, for this particular project. Todd Ferguson is here as well. Uh, he's with the Pontiff Valley Surveyors, uh, for survey and, and engineering. Um, the existing conditions of, of the site today, um, this particular property actually, um, contains four different lots, um, totaling over twenty-five thousand square feet. Um, uh, it's located in a Residence A zoning district, which obviously, as this board knows, allows for single-family residences. Um, it is currently approved by a non-conforming one-and-one-half-story single-family residence. Um, I'll remind the board, this matter wasn't before you before, but this property for a proposal was before you, uh, back in January or February, January, February of this year. Um, that particular proposal was, uh, still a subdivision of two lots. However, uh, the proposal was for a two-family, um, on, on the new parcel. Uh, we withdrew that, uh, that application. Uh, we withdrew it because we had, end up having a neighborhood meeting, uh, with the assistance of, uh, Council Dave McCarthy, uh, back in January. Um, it was a Zoom neighborhood meeting. There were many neighbors, uh, that were on this Zoom meeting, um, um, which I think there, some of them are here this evening as well. Um, some of the concerns, as we're faced with quite a bit, is a multifamily in a Residence A zoning district, you know? So we understood that. Uh, secondly, um, there were some concern with respect to stormwater drainage, you know, from, from the property. Um, although we had some retention, uh, proposed, uh, for that particular proposal, uh, we've added, um, additional retention cul-de-sac systems, uh, in this new proposal. Um, so to give you kind of a sense of this property, again, it's four, four different lots. A single-family home is, is there today. Um, it's accessed , uh, off of Edgemere on a private way. Uh, this particular property was actually created and designed, um, by the late Alfred Peachey, uh, who's the father of, of Robert and Alfred who are here this evening. Um, he created this private way, this particular cul-de-sac as well. Um, if you look at the property itself, the way it's laid out with this home really to one side of the property, uh, leaving this whole other parcel vacant, uh, there was intention by him over the years to create at least one additional, if not two additional lots. You know, we are creating one additional lot here, uh, for proposed single-family. Um, you know, so it was a productive neighborhood meeting. We listened very hard to the concerns of the neighbors, both the two units on Residence A as well as the stormwater, which were two of the major concerns they had for that neighborhood meeting. Uh, so we did listen to them. Um, you know, the, the Peachey family is a, is a Quincy family, you know? Uh, they've owned this property for many years. Their father owned it. He raised his family in this particular home, you know? As I said, had intention to create more lots, hoping his family would live near him. That never happened. His, his sons are doing it, trying to do it today. Um, so again, the proposal before the board this evening is to really subdivide this, um, into two parcels. Um, we tried to approach this to meet almost every dimensional requirement of the ordinance in doing this, okay? So one of the parcels with the single-family home on it today is over eighty-two hundred square feet. So that exceeds the, the lot size requirement. Um, the second parcel, which is the vacant parcel, which will, which will house this, this proposed single-family residence, is over sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet. Um, so almost, oh, double the size of, of what, what is required today. And again, it's a proposed single-family. Um, it's been designed in a way to maintain a lot of landscape, and we're going to add to a lot of the landscape as well, um, to this property. We get, there are a little bit of tree removal. I think we have a seven or eight count, uh, which will be replaced on-site. Uh, my client fully understands the tree ordinance here. Um, I'm going to let, um, uh, Mr. Gavin, uh, Gavin Driscoll, as well as Ed Roach, talk about, um, you know, that the, uh, the single-family itself. But before this board, uh, what we are requesting, um, again, and I can't stress it enough, we're not cresting any type of use variance here, um, because it is, um, it is indeed a single-family residence, which is allowed in this Residence A district. Uh, we're seeking very minor dimensional relief due to the really odd shape of this lot. Again, tried hard to meet all the dimensional requirements, including setbacks. Uh, we had to push the home further back typically. Um, so it's beyond fifty feet is a front setback, which you don't run into typically. Uh, we did that to kind of preserve the other setbacks, and that's why, uh, it came, came to that. So a relatively long driveway. Um, you know, we're seeking a finding, excuse me, a variance for the frontage and width of this lot. Again, the shape of this lot really affects that. You need vehicular access from the frontage. We don't have it entirely along, um, uh, Adeline Place, uh, is where we're a little bit short in that, in that sense. Uh, we are seeking a finding as well only because the existing home is a non-conforming home because of one setback. So we are changing that because of the lot size and things of that nature. So there is a, there is a, a change to, to that. You know, we do feel, um, this will really improve everything. This will not be substantially more detrimental, detrimental to the neighborhood. We think it will improve things. Um, so without further ado, unless you have questions for me before I hand it off to, uh, Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Roach.
I don't have any. Do you have any questions?
I have not.
Anyone?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Roach.
Members of the board, um, in eighteen fifty-eight, when Adeline Place was first designed and laid out as presently proposed with the new building use, it was always anticipated by the Peachey family that there'd be a new home built on the site, like, on the site's extended or budding land parcel, shown as proposed lot one, as shown on the site plan right here. The new home is designed to fit into the existing Adeline Crescent, um, designing the property in harmony with the existing neighborhood. The proposed home is designed in keeping with the many other houses of similar scale, design, and style of a modest, single-family home that would minimally impact the surrounding neighborhood. The site's landscape features have been preserved with many elements existing and new incorporated on, on, on the site plan as shown. There's nothing unusual in its shape or foundation, scale, amassing setbacks, et cetera. They are consistent with many other homes that have long existed along Adeline Place. Uh, my associate Gavin Driscoll will present the, the drawings. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Thank you. Um, this is the, uh, proposed site plan showing, uh, the proposed landscaping. Uh, like Rob said, there will be seven trees removed, and, uh, we will replace that with nine. Um, we'll also have some natural buffers of privet, um, and other landscaping of, uh, native plants that will also be spread out throughout the property. And, um, Todd's going to just touch on the water extension before we get over to the floor.
Before you do that, just, what, the back lot line there, like?
Yeah.
Are you putting it, is it fencing? What is it?
There is a fence at the back of the property, yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah. Oh, the, the management lines and everything, and also the property behind is actually probably below.
Okay, thanks.
So.
So I have a small bird.
If you don't mind, just coming over to the mic, too.
Yeah, yeah.
They need you for TV.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make you famous.
I'm great.
One to the panel, please. Thanks so much.
They realized how popular we are during the pandemic.
Yeah.
So in regards to stormwater management, uh, we designed, uh, a pretty big cul-de-sac system in the front. You see it? It's going to ma, it's going to maintain, it's going
And I do applaud all the professionals that got up here and spoke. Yes, Mr. Peachey wants to expand his future plans were to develop the land. But I do think it's correct that he put in permits and was denied. Okay. Well, that's a fact. Okay. He also built his house nonconforming, which caused them, the board at that time, to deny any future building on the property. Okay? And yes, I do agree that it's a 25,000 square foot lot when you look at it on paper. But please, as you did, go out there. It's a horrible piece of land. Horrible. It starts sloping and it goes straight off into the water, to the flood zone. It barely meets the 100-foot variance. So when they're building the house, how's that 100-foot buffer going to be protected? Okay? Another question I have is, gentlemen, professional got up and talked about the water retention? That's excellent. But the thing is, Mass code is, the water retention has to be 10-foot from the property line and 10-foot from the foundation. There are two tanks in the backyard. There's only 18-foot setback. So how are you going to meet that?
We revise.
Well, we haven't seen it.
That's right.
Yeah, but you gave it to them and not to us. Okay? And once again, that's... The homeowners are sort of at a disadvantage when you come to these because they have all these professionals and they've worked on this since January. We were notified, what, two and a half weeks ago? So we don't have revised plans that you... There's been some tonight. So right there, we're at a disadvantage. Okay? The land is in a very poor... Our neighborhood, if you check with DPW, has sewer problems. It's backed up at my house twice. It's backed up on the whole block. They were out this year, two months ago, to blow out the whole line. They were also at Southern Artery, and they had to blow that out. So you're adding another house? And I'm all for... You're right. Last time we said we wouldn't mind a single-family house. You could put my house, or any of my neighbors' house, into that lot, and we wouldn't be here tonight. They're putting a 65 by 44 house, a 3,700-square-foot house with full basement that's not counted yet as square footage, that will be square footage as soon as this house is built. There's not another house that's twice the size of any house in the neighborhood. You put in storm drains. They talk about removing eight trees. Where the house is going to go, there's over 50 trees that will be taken out. They may be this big around, or they may be this big around. But a house, a neighborhood that floods, and you take away, and it's got loose soil, okay? You take away all that greenery, all that shrubbery, what's that going to do? Okay, they have water retention afterwards. What are they going to do during the construction? What are they going to do to protect the water retention then? I'm opposed to this. I've lived in the neighborhood. I've seen the lot. I've talked to Mrs. Peachey personally. I did her favors personally, okay, as well as a lot of the other neighbors. But this is the wrong house and the wrong neighborhood, and it's just too big of a house. It's 30... It's going to be, what, 35 feet tall?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two? The people on Southern Artery will not get any sun in the winter at all. Their backyard's going to be ice. Okay? Our neighborhood already has a laugh, you know? Our neighborhood already has a flooding issue. Okay? So I'm against it. Thanks for your time. I love the eye contact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Is there anyone else? I guess that must be it. Really, actually, if you could come up. Yep, we have a lot to do tonight, really. Does anyone else who's going to speak, please come up and be waiting?
My name is...
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Casey Von Gerson. I live at 329 Southern Artery.
329, right?
Yes. And that was the one they mentioned, about 15, 20 feet below. So there is a severe incline that comes down from their property into ours. So we are... Here, I have a picture, actually.
This is your letter, so I'm not going to read it into the record since you're here speaking.
Okay. And so I can show you the concern in regards to the elevation. You can pass this around.
Thank you.
Elevation, obviously, along Southern Artery. It's quite a severe incline. Further down towards the marsh, it's also, as mentioned. So that is a great concern in regards to flooding, in regards to who's maintaining a lot of these flooding things that they're saying for much of that. And so I feel that is a concern. I feel looking at this building as well is a great concern. Not really consideration for space, for history, for aesthetics even for a lot of this. I have also showing their property and then all the others minus this one. Could fit, I think, about two and a half of my homes in that one. That's a large single-family. It looked very similar to the double-family they had done previously. And so I'm not really seeing much consideration for our neighborhood. We have had community meetings. We have spoken up. There has not been much transparency and no participation from them at all for hearing us, for speaking to that. And so I feel, I mean, I have many concerns, as some other folks have already mentioned and some will mention, for this going forward. If it is a reasonable-sized, single-family there, go for it. That'd be beautiful, like something that does look similar to all the other homes in the neighborhood. Okay, that's fine, but this is quite frightening. For example, when I look out my second-floor window, it is directly in line with the land that they're proposing to build on, which isn't much because then it quickly goes down from there. And so there's quite elevation. We've had flooding issues, I mean, as a lot of other people have had. You know, luckily, the rain dries up, but it's still not good to have in our basement. So I guess, do you guys have any questions or anything for... Okay.
Take your time.
You're welcome.
Close your right side.
Hi, my name's Alessandra. I live at 63 Edgemere Road, along with my partner, Michael.
Michael, this is who?
Yeah. I've lived there for 25 years. I actually grew up in that house. We're directly in front of where they're proposing to put the property. In all my years of living there, growing up as a child, that was essentially like an extension, almost like my backyard, and I had never seen anyone there, really, or even taking care of the property until like about the past year or so, when they came out to start surveying. I have serious concerns about the flooding issues. I think they said they need to remove seven or nine trees. It is a heavily wooded area. There's no way. I believe that some of those trees have probably been there for longer than our houses. My house was built in 1907. Some of the other houses are also over 100 years old in the neighborhood, so that's already a big difference. I live at the top of the hill, so we have minimal flooding, but I think that they said that they're going to catch some of the runoff of the driveway and the roof, but that large garage will displace a lot of the trees that help absorb the water, as well as the soil there, and it goes down into the wetlands. So I am concerned just about also the wildlife that is in the backyard. I believe that because they need to face the Edgemere Road, the... Actually, the front of the house looks directly into our backyard as well, so there's a little bit of a privacy issue. I'm not sure what they have planned as far as sort of landscaping. Again, not a lot of stuff has been shared with us, so disappointing. And additionally, concerned about the impact on the sewer, as we have also had the sewer back up into our basement in 2020.
Yeah, some fun to deal with.
Yeah. I'm trying to think if there's several other things. What else do you remember?
I think with Quincy's increasing population, the renovation of MBTA infrastructure, and the recent surge in condo development, it's important that we're thoughtful with what we permit now and how it can be applied to the future, future development projects as Quincy's population, at least I see it, increasing, has become more of a hub and an accessory to Boston.
Can't even drive around here.
Yeah.
No.
I know that even just up the street where the citizens bank in, because I think they're about to put in like 100 more apartments. I personally don't really see the need to, as I think one of the neighbors said before, kind of fill the donut hole of the donut of our houses that have been sort of surrounding the property. I honestly, it doesn't make sense to me. I think that house they're proposing, they said it's a modest home. I think there's five bedrooms on the second floor, maybe for the Brady Bunch, right? Our house has three bedrooms, so this is a lot larger, and I don't understand why it has to be so large as a single-family home. It pretty much looks like the two-family home that they had proposed, except they just slapped like a single-family sticker on it. So we are against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Skidmore, 103 Greenleaf Street. I'm a director, hi. I'm a director of Barrow Peachey Property. I've lived there for over 30 years. I renovated a dilapidated Victorian house, and this house that I want to build, I object to it mainly for the fact that it's still too big for the neighborhood. And like the previous people have said, I'm going to re-rate. What they've said is that it's not in keeping with the neighborhood. It's way taller than my house, and it's just detrimental to the neighborhood. If they had put a modest, small house there, kept some in the greenery, not ruined the wildlife, we'd have been fine. And the lot isn't wonderful. The topography is absolutely terrible, and the soil, if you go try it on it, dips, dumps, it sinks all over the place. I think it's going to contribute to the wetlands. It's going to flood the neighbors on Southern Artery. It's going to block out the sunlight for people. And again, I don't see any need. I've lived there for 30 years. That property has been... Nothing's been built there for 60 years. There's a good reason. And, you know, I knew that their property was nonconforming when I purchased my house, and I knew, I was told at the time, that nothing could be built there. Perfect little spot. There's nothing wrong with the house that's there now. Hey, if they wanted to add on to that, that would be fine, but I don't see that Quincy needs another single-family house, as the previous person said, stuck in the donut behind everybody else's house. So for that reason, I oppose it.
Next. Next?
Hi, I'm Peter Stevens, 58 Edgemere Road, and I believe that we are the longest-serving residents of Edgemere Road, and I concur with everything my friends and neighbors have said here. There's just two things that, to me, that stand out. One, it's not as if there's blanket opposition to anything being put on that property. His existing house is fine, but even a more modest home, that's fine, you know, at least from our viewpoints, I think. I speak for everybody. But the other thing, too, has been the lack of transparency, and it's kind of hard to take everything at face value from the developers and all, when most of the time, what we're seeing are the plans at a very late stage in all of this. And I think that the lack of transparency from the very start has been something that kind of, it's galled everyone that I've spoken to on the street, and I think more than anything, it's the size of the home. It's not in character with the rest of the neighborhood. A more modest home, sure, but that and the lack of transparency, and Mick spoke in terms of, and Herman, in terms of the lot itself, the soil, and it's hardly the pristine piece of property, in my opinion, that it's been presented as. So just wanted to get that off my chest, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Cufall. I live at 49 Edgemere Road, and that's one of the properties that's kind of more on the bottom of that incline that they spoke to you about from the property. So I literally live right in the middle of what is a wetland, and I can say that safely because the first year that I lived here was around 2017. I came here after Hurricane Maria destroyed Puerto Rico. Everything I had was gone, and my family needed to relocate and start over again, and we came to Quincy. And so I bought that property about seven years ago, 2017. And at that time, I remember the first year, I wanted to clean that whole back area up. It was dry. I found pots and pans because I guess people were camping out back there. They were having little cookouts. We found remnants of tree houses. It used to be someplace that kids could go play. This year, my son counted 12 ducks that we named Frick Frack, Mick Mack, Click Clack down the road, because now we have water there most of the year. It's not going away the way that it used to in 2017, when I first moved here. Since that time, also, multiple trees in that back area started falling because as the water accumulates, I don't think that's very good for the trees. My neighbor had her shed destroyed by a falling tree. My other neighbor had two trees taken down because they were dead. I have a dead tree in the back of my house. So without those trees being replenished, they're not soaking up the water that's needed to take that away. Add to that the fact that in the Folsom Field, I believe they built a new shed. There was some issues about water drainage from that as well. So I am worried about that because in just since 2017, I personally have seen that go from a place you could camp in and your kids could have a tree house to essentially wetlands where I have hawks nesting back there. There's a pair of them. There's a falcon that recently attacked a hawk's nest. There are multiple birds, cardinals, trying to nest up there. Meanwhile, the trees are falling, the water's accumulating. These gentlemen are proposing a very large home up there, and I say that because if you look at the home they're proposing versus the home that's currently there, and mind you, that's a single lot they broke up into two. So they're putting up that huge house on what's essentially a half a lot, not a full lot, and I live right downstream from it. And now they're proposing all these water drainage mitigation systems, which all that does is tell me they know there's a problem with the flooding there. Otherwise, they wouldn't have to put it in because none of our other houses have it.
When they build a new house and they put those in for the neighborhood, that's why you do that.
Right, but none of us have needed it, and we've lived there just fine. So the fact that you need this system just tells me that there is a problem, they need to mitigate it. I don't know how many... Could you please tell me just how many variances that they need? I apologize. I don't know how many variances they're actually requesting.
Two small dimensions.
Two small dimensions.
Like feet, like two feet and four feet.
Again, because they're putting in something that's bigger than the lot.
Well, one of them's a street access.
So that's my biggest concern. I also just want to say that I appreciate that, you know, just as me, they had a dream of having a family, their house next door, everybody, you know, living together, and I appreciate that. We all have that dream, but that's no longer what's being developed here. And I think that the inconvenience that this is causing multitudes of residents for one single-family doesn't balance it out. Last thing is, I don't feel that we're a neighborhood that's against development or construction. I have neighbors that have put in swimming pools. I myself have spent over $150,000 this year remodeling my home. We put money into our houses. We remodel. We're not against development. We're not against remodeling. This is just the wrong project for that plant. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
How you guys doing?
Is this the first meeting that has happened in person? Because I've caught a couple of meetings. Oh, okay. All right. Point of information before I start, so everything I say is addressed to... Oh, I'm sorry. James Abundus, 76 Edgemere. I am the resident, lives across the street from the private way. And the question I had before I start asking questions is, all my questions are addressed to the board.
To us through...
Okay.
We can address that.
All right. So, you know, we've had a couple of meetings, and to try to decipher what the proposal is, I heard Laura Fleming say that he was asking for minor relief. You just articulated two feet. You mentioned four feet. Can you show me the drawing that you have where that's spelled out?
So we get the dimensional form.
Okay, so that's helpful.
Yeah, so there's five feet, roughly five feet of frontage for the property. And there's two feet of rear.
Okay. So can you explain to me how you determine lot width? You said it's online, but, you know, I don't know. How's that calculated?
The width of the lot and the dimensions of the lot.
It just depends on...
The property.
Yeah, the corner lots are different. It could be anything.
You got a corner lot on the street, you got 25 and 25. If you have a regular lot on the street, it's 20 and 13.
Okay, so I'm asking because I went to the website, and you have a definition for determining that, and it's pretty complicated, so I try to determine that. I didn't have access to that.
What's your question, sir?
My question is, what is the minimum relief that you're asking for? I'd like to submit this as an exhibit.
Since I don't have access to that, nor do my neighbors, we can... Who don't have access to what, though? That's what I hate to hear up here. Is access, any day you want to get on there, you can get anything you want from the DPW.
It's all online now, too.
And it's all online. So, I mean, no one's hiding anything from anybody.
So Chairman...
But when people, when you make statements like that, it upsets me. We don't have what you have. You have exactly what we have.
So let me respond to that comment. So you're making the assumption that we've made no effort to get anything. You know what?
I didn't say that at all.
No, but...
You made an assumption that we have stuff you don't have. People are hiding stuff. No one's hiding anything here. Let's straighten that out right there.
So let me explain, so there's some clarity here. We didn't have access to this document, so what did we do? We emailed our council member who forwarded it to Laura Fleming, and we're asking the questions I'm asking right now. So if we can't get directly from the source, you're saying, that doesn't matter. You can get it from the city. But, you know, we don't know what the protocol is, you know? You're telling me there's a process? We don't, we've never been here.
It's all online.
No, but you missed the point. I asked specifically our council member, I raised this question. He forwarded it to Laura Fleming, and Laura Fleming, does he have any obligation to give us these documents?
And he must have gave it to you, so you...
No, he did not. He did not give them to us.
The council never gave you documents?
No, I emailed Rob Fleming, and Rob Fleming sent it to you.
What did he send me?
I responded to your all your questions.
Okay, so the response, the response that we had...
I did.
I could forward the email, but the response that we had...
I said that.
And I did.
I did say thank you.
I was polite. But the response that we had was that there was a issue with the setback in the back two feet. You mentioned that. We figured that out. There's also a setback with the frontage, so the house is more than 55 feet. I don't know. This is what the rules say.
It's not a... It's the frontage is your actual street access. So think of your lot as a rectangle. Like, don't think of this complicated lot. Think of your lot as a rectangle. 85 feet is what the cities, you know, if, there is not one, there's hardly any conforming lots in the city of Quincy. Your lot is probably, does not have 85 feet of frontage. I'm not, I'm just assuming that just based on the street. Nobody does. There's very few... When they drew up the zoning ordinances, one of the ordinances was 85 feet of front.
So most of the houses that are built in our neighborhood were built between 1910, 1930. There were some other houses that were built at different times. I'd like to submit this. I'd like to refute the argument, the argument that somehow this house is comparable in scale and size to the neighborhood. That information that you have there comes specifically from the city of Quincy, from the website. So you can compare what the average footprint looks like. You can compare, you already have the other drawing, what that house looks like in relationship to some typical houses. That's that drawing over there, and that's the whole neighborhood that you're looking at. So if you look at the footprint and the square feet and the year built, the deviations are in newer homes, but the square feet totals are very different. Anyways, we've been trying to figure out, we didn't have access to that document, and you know what? Shame on us that we didn't know how to search for it, but we didn't have access to what the minor relief that's being asked. So I'm here asking, you know, what it is.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And you just showed me a document, so this is the first time that, this is the first time that I've heard of it.
I thought you got it from them. I thought you just said you got it from them.
No, I didn't get it from them. I got an email response that, on behalf of the neighborhood, that said, we're asking for minor relief for the rear. We're asking for minor relief for the width. That's, the statement was that simple. There's no... Oh, by the way, let us share this with you. So, you know, why is this a concern to us? Because the last proposal, this is not our third opportunity to vet a proposal from the applicant. It's our third. So what was not mentioned was, there was a seven-townhouse proposal that was being planned to be built in that space in residential A. Nothing ever came before the ZBA, so there was no formal decision. Then there was this other proposal for two, for a two-family dwelling, and the only way we found out about it was, we all got a notice in the mail. So we started asking questions, and then that's why we responded. So I disagree with the statement, and I'll quote, this comes directly from the gentleman that are taping. It says, "We had attempted through Councilman McCarthy to schedule a neighborhood meeting a while back. It became very difficult and problematic, so we weren't able to do that." That was mentioned on your December 13th meeting. So when we heard that, we got upset because we started asking, well, who was contacted? What effort was made? There was no effort. So I'd love to hear a rebuttal because we didn't get it.
We don't, we don't get...
No, 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 but I'm just saying, I just wanted to spell the illusion.
And the people in the neighborhood and the council...
And you obviously watched that meeting. I mean, that project was dead on arrival because we don't approve multi-families and a single-family residence A.
Thank God.
So, I mean, that was, it was clear and apparent right from the get-go, you know? So it wasn't a serious proposal to even members of this board.
But I just point these out just to illustrate a point, is that the applicant has come with ideas before to develop that lot that were not either appropriate for that, the residential A neighborhood, or just simply ridiculous, you know? A seven-family tap...
All right, all right. You gotta pick it up.
All right, let me ask, let me ask some questions, sir.
You've got seven minutes. You've been doing 15.
Well, I'm trying to ask some questions. When, when they develop lots, do they not develop them so that you can build a house?
Right.
Yes, okay. So when this whole neighborhood was subdivided, it was subdivided to build houses, but according to current regulations, it probably does not fit. When that property was developed, it was, well, it was split in 1958 into two lots. It was one big lot, and then from that one lot...
There was four lots there.
There's four lots there right now. Yes.
So let's not go back to 58 because it doesn't matter now. It's 2022. Let's talk about the project on the end.
All right.
I'm going to have to just cut you off.
So, sir, here's my point.
Well, let's get to the point.
Okay, I want to...
Really, I got a long night here.
Okay, let me get to the point. So when...
You've got enough time for three people.
When someone claims a lot hardship, it's not like, it's not like, you know, he inherited land from John Quincy Adams. That lot hardship was created by the property owner. Is that correct? I mean, I'm asking. It's not?
No, they built it, they built it and subdivided, and whenever they subdivided, that's what you got now. We're in 2022. Those have changed 10 times.
Got it?
All right?
So...
What's your question, sir? I'm going to cut you off.
Well, I'm asking what the, sir, I'm asking...
But I'm not going on all night.[1578.13]
That lot hardship was created by the property owner. Is that correct? I mean, I'm asking.
No.
It's not?
No, they built it, they built it and subdivided it, and whenever they subdivided, that's what you got now. We're in 2022, rules have changed ten times.
Got it?
All right?
So.
What's your question, sir? I'm gonna cut you off.
Well, I'm asking what the, sir, I'm asking. You're asking me what my, I'm asking you the question, sir. My question is, what is, what is the lot hardship or the shape hardship? I'd like to submit this.
They're not. They're putting a single-family home there, and they're asking for, they're asking for two feet and three feet in the back. That's what they're asking for.
But then, then why do they need variances if everything's fine? I, I'm asking.
You're asking for a variance. That's why you come to the ZBA.
Correct.
Ask them to vary from the code, correct?
So let me make a, let me make a statement.
Make a statement.
And then I'll ask more questions. You said you gave me seven minutes, sir.
You won. You've already over.
You know, I'm not, I'm not against building a property there. I, I would.
I barely think some of yous are because you've had it as open land for so long.
I have seven minutes, sir. Can you let me?
You already have it.
No, I didn't. I, I have seven seconds, I have seven minutes.
No, we have seven minutes from the beginning, sir.
I'm sorry, but you're interrupting me. You're making me lose my thought. No, sir, I'm trying to be respectful.
I made a statement to you like you asked.
Okay, I am not opposed to a house being developed there.
I've heard that.
What I am opposed to is having something that's not like right fit for the neighborhood. Okay, but.
Seven times.
Not for me.
From you.
No, you didn't.
Yes, you did. That house was too big. That house was too big. This here, look at the average houses. I'm gonna submit a law. Sir, wrap it up now, I'm cutting you off.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to say a little bit on behalf of the neighbor who came up to talk about the flooding issues. You know, I look at these plans, I've got three plans. I've got three plans. I don't know which one to use, three site plans. This is coming from the city. Some have an official stamp, some don't. The most recent site plan that I have is one that was submitted on June 3rd. On June 3rd, that site plan has a stormwater plan. So that's great. There's some information there. It's not something that we had access to that we could process. One thing that's not in the site plan is number one, a stamp from the city or a signature from the engineer who prepared that plan. So I don't know how you guys assess stuff. We're trying to assess stuff, but we can't because I, I can share with you. I'll just give you my documents. You can tell me which one I should use when we have our meetings to ask questions.
The one you have right there and stamp on it. See the stamp on it? That's the one you can use.
Okay.
So we're gonna use that.
Are you looking at it, sir?
Sir, you're all done. Wrap it up. You're done. You're done.
Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's take five, 10 minutes. We'll come back. Come on, we're live.
Bringing it back a little bit. I went out there in February, January with a lot of the neighbors. It's a cold day. Went out and looked at that lot. Well, the one thing that bothers me about the lot, it is deceiving. And Chairman, you were out there with me. After about 20 or 30 yards, there's a significant drop-off into that wetlands that runs behind Southern Otterie. I am more concerned about the Southern Otterie homes disturbing this mound, which I think has pretty much been held together by all those trees for the last empty years. I think that if a structure goes on there, and a lot of people have said we're in favor of a smaller house, and maybe it'll work. I went out there a couple more times on my own and took a good look at that down low and got some pictures from some of the neighbors that have been on Southern Otterie a little further down. The erosion in that little valley has increased so much over the years to add something on top of this hill, which is a terrible piece of land. Plenty of square footage to fit the zoning requirements and to be able to do, gee, this looks like an easy one. We'll, we'll give them a variance. But if they're not on top of that hill, and I don't know how good that hill is, those trees, those roots, it all goes down to that wetlands and that swamp that leads into the marsh behind the tennis courts. Now, for years, we've had issues with water, trying to get water out from behind Southern Otterie and get it into the marshland that's over near the YMCA with an equalization pipe under the road. It, it works some of the time, but Mother Nature dictates what comes down from the Ponsett watershed and the Blue Hills, and everything comes down, right down to that area. That is ground zero in regards to water where the marshes and where this, this area is. I got eight kids and I don't have five bedrooms. You know? I'm thinking about this house maybe, but, but it's a big house. It's almost as big as the two-family that was gonna be put in there until Mr. Fleming took a step back. We knew it was Residence A, Residence, we weren't gonna go in there, so that was a non-starter. Mr. Abundus mentioned the seven-unit condos or whatever it was before my time, before a lot of our times. And that wasn't gonna go in it. But I'm opposed to pretty much anything on that hill unless that hill really gets a good, a good, you know, I know there's no soil testers that are required or anything like that, but that hill is gonna affect Southern Otterie homes. Not really worried about Edgemere or Putnam, but the back of the Edgemere homes on the right where the Kelshers live and then the homes that are down below on Southern Otterie. That's what's concerning me a little bit with the, with the size of the structure. And any structure at all, when they go in and start tearing out trees and loosening things up. I think they're gonna have a very ugly piece of land to try to do something with because they only have a short porch before it drops off. And I don't know if the zoning guys, if you, if you folks get out there to take a good look at it, but it's very susceptible to flooding in that area. It's not gonna go away. I know they put the repositories for water, but Mother Nature goes right to that area and soaks that area. So it's a big concern to me.
Looking for a retaining wall back there?
I don't know what. I think it's too early to say yeah to what they have until there's more, you know, taking a look at something down there, especially with Southern Otterie. I mean, this is above, above everything in Southern Otterie, you know, on the left side. I know they take a beating all the way down to the last home where the Cahalins live or Chrissy Cahalan who lives down on the left, the last house. And they have major sewer issues where we have to go in and help them out because.
Is that coming from that property?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but everything gets driven, it's not going uphill. It's all hitting the property. It goes down into the valley, and I just don't know how stable that, that area is. At first, when you see it, you see, you know, 17,000 square feet.
Right, in fact, about 100 feet.
You're like, you know? No, it goes, I don't think it goes back that far, Chairman. I think it goes back, and then all of a sudden, it starts a fast decline. And I went out and took a couple more looks, and like I said, I saw some pictures, and it really erodes down. So I don't know if things have to be stabilized before they put something up. Because, a good point, I think Mr. Lumpkin might have said it, that, you know, when they stop building, you're gonna have a sloppy. It's gonna be, if you give it the go-ahead, interesting for Southern Otterie, more than, than the folks that'll live up above. So I, I'm opposed right now to what's been put out until we take a better look at it. And I know it's out of the flood zone, so it skipped Concom. But it's in a, it's in an ugly, an ugly area. Thanks.
If I may. Take five.
Can I just say something real quick?
Go ahead, Counselor.
The construction of any home is gonna be overseen by Mr. Duca's department, you know, at various levels of construction. You know, you're gonna dig, that's gonna be inspected, the forms are gonna be inspected. You know, that whole area is gonna be inspected, but before a foundation is actually formed. You know, so I think his, his staff members will be able to see the integrity of, of the area that Mr. McCarthy is referring to, you know.
And I know how it goes back, and I know it doesn't drain all back. I, I know that. I know it. You take out trees, you gotta put other trees in, so.
Absolutely, you know.
It's not like it takes, you gotta put same tree back in, so.
And again, we're retaining a lot of that, that stormwater where it's not, it's not controlled at all now. You know, it's going into the soil, but it's still running somewhere. You know, it's not, it's not controlled.
Can we take like 10 minutes and come back? Just before we close that part of the hearing, it's, it's a letter of opposition that Mr. Sanders wants to add.
Councilman McCarthy, my name is Diane Kelch. I live in, I'm 53 Edgemere since October of 78. Many years I've lived on Edgemere Road. I've seen many changes and improvements in Quincy, high school, YMCA, track and field. All these projects have uncommoned that generally the area referred to as wetlands is the back of my house and has become more and more wet. When we first moved to this house, the back area is mostly dry, only occasionally had standing water in the spring. The children used to play in this area, hide and seek. As time progressed, the areas become wetter and larger, so now that there always seems to be standing water there, and it's impossible to walk in now without getting wet. Many of the trees have died, some have just fallen, some have needed to be cut down because they're a danger to other properties. I see no reason to grant the variance to Mr. Petchey. I live in an area of single-family homes, and I would like not to see a change in my community. I would also like that the area to remain one of single-family homes of owners occupying them. I also feel that by allowing a massive, a single-family home to be built there, there will be increased drainage problems affecting my property. The water problem has only increased through the years. Despite my many assurances that the problem would be mitigated by a plan, this has proven not to be so. By building in that area, I'm sure the drainage problem will only become worse. I'm tired of hearing assurances that nothing will change or even that the situation will improve. For these reasons, I would like the parcel subdivided.
All right, part of the hearing closed. I don't, Mr. Duca, this was on the, on a test, just, just, just for a soil test. Could you guys get a soil test done in, in two weeks?
We couldn't, we'd have to.
Oh, four weeks? Can you do it in four weeks, July 12?
Yep.
And this is what I'm thinking. Let's get a soil test in the back of that, where it goes back, where the house is gonna be built. Make sure that that, nothing strange is gonna happen. I know Mr. Duca is probably gonna have that all done anyway. But I think we'd all feel a little better to know if we had it in front of us, what the soil is there. And I'm, and I'm probably sure the soil is fine to build a home, but if it isn't, we'd all know. We'll come back here July 12 with the results, and then we can make our decision, yea and ay. Yep?
I agree with me.
Yeah.
Is there anything else we wanna ask him to come back with at this point?
That's all I'm looking for. Anyone else looking for anything else? I just wanna make sure that the house ain't gonna interrupt the back of that land.
Look, I, I think that I'm very, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the frontage. I mean, you're at almost 80 feet. Like I said, most homes in Quincy barely have 50, especially in your neck of the woods. I've kind of been consistent on this, and I'll continue to be consistent on this. I don't see the reason for another two feet on the back lot line. I'm, you know, I mean, at least make it conforming on the rear lot.
Move it up too.
Yeah, I mean, you have the frontage.
So move it up two feet too?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I just think that, I think that, you know.
Then you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, we're sitting here, that just takes one of the variances off the table. I, you know, I mean, I understand the, the size and scale of the home, but everything else is by right. You know, it's just that five-feet frontage, then, then, then that's all we're, we're, we're kinda discussing. I don't know about you guys, if you had any takeaways.
That might help with the, you know, the slope in the back as well, the grade, the top grade. And maybe save some trees back there, I'm not quite sure, but if you could move it closer to the front, that might, might solve more than what it should.
Yeah, just two feet. I mean, it's not crazy, I mean.
As the house is right now, it's about, the end of the house is towards the slope, it's about two foot. But we did try to pull it as closest to the left side as we could without interrupting also that. We definitely can shift it left and pull it forward as much as possible.
All right.
And we also pulled the two feet. We kept going back about one foot better with the rear and side, so we can pull that to two feet.
Yeah, I mean, I just think after hearing everything, that's kind of my ask is, is, you know, everything else is by right. I understand it's a large home and, and, you know, I mean, the, large homes have been built next to all of us, you know? I mean, that, that we had to approve too, so sometimes they fit, sometimes they don't.
Well, it does have a lot of land.
Yeah.
16,000 feet.
Exactly. So can we do that? Why don't we make a motion for two weeks, four weeks, July 12? And I come back with a test and move the two feet, we get the new drawings, and we can make our decision on that.
We have to follow up on the lack, lack of contribution to the waterways up there, that's a wet.
Yeah.
The water's flowing in and out when we're doing the vote now.
Yeah.
We can either determine that more flow is going over there or less of flow is going over there.
Yeah.
You know, so we can look at that. A way be exact concern, that you gotta be, dump a little more stuff in there.
Yeah, I mean, four inch, four inch stones, that's, that's a huge stone.
Well, that's why we designed it that way. Because there's no drain line in that only place or edge of it.
Right.
So, I mean, it kinda has to be there.
Yeah, it has to be.
We can't run all the laws of the major. There's no drain on Edgemere. It might be way down, it's down towards the wetland. I think probably that's the ground, the floor that was down.
That's why they're putting it all, keep it all. All right, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, case ZBA 22-39, Alfred Peckay, for a variance finding to subdivide the four lots into two lots, keeping the existing single-family home on one lot and construct a new single-family home on the newly created lot on the premise number 12 Adeline Place Quincy, and make a motion to move the hearing till July 12.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor? All right, closed. Don't move. Thank you. Thank you. Brother on the tonight's agenda.
We suggest to the neighbors to go down to DBW and get the upcoming information.
Yeah, they can. ZBA 22-40, Off the Grid Architects, for finding to construct an addition over the existing room on the premise 130 Reservoir Road. The African representative here. No, he didn't do. He swore no way. He didn't all night.
I swear it happened.
Just in-person stuff, you know?
Yeah, in-person stuff, a little different.
Not used to dealing with people.
You have a floor, name and address.
Before member, my name is Scott Estrelaia from Off the Grid Architects. We, our project, we start looking for finding for the expansion of that.
All right, we're gonna do something now, actually, it's on the beginning, which. Anyone here that's gonna speak tonight, please raise your right hand and take an oath if you could, Mr. Chairman.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Anyone that'll swear, raise your right hand. You're gonna speak?
You swear to tell the truth tonight. Thank you.
John, John, I'm surprised you didn't yell at us for that.
Sorry, Dan, for about two, go ahead.
We're looking for a finding for a non-conforming area. Part of the scope is we're trying to extend a single, a portion of the second floor above and a non-conforming portion of the house on the first floor. So that non-conforming is under 25 feet of the property line, it's 17 now. So in order to extend that area, in order to create another bedroom. So we're looking for four bedroom house now currently has three. So we need to extend the second floor.
Up straight, correct?
Yeah, yeah, up straight.
Same lot?
We are not, we are not.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, we are not, we are not, we are not creating any changes to the building, we stay the same. The 36th of the house is gonna be the same take style, and the roof line will be the same.
Any questions, Yav? Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor on this project?
Name and address, girl.
I'm Sarah Don, 130 Reservoir Road. Mr. Chairman, my name is before, I'm Adam Clark. I'm here on my own behalf, and on behalf of my husband, who together we're the property owners at 130 Reservoir Road. We're also very grateful to our neighbor Marion Haskins for joining us tonight. And I will speak for her, be honest, in support of this project. I also have a letter from, so, excuse me, Marion, it is on the non-conforming side. So she's that property owner that's on that close side. And I have a letter from a neighbor who's unable to leave today, who's across. And I'll just say, before you read that letter, that my husband and I moved to Boston area for grad school, and I fell in love with Quincy, coming down to Quincy Court, down, it was a short drive for an internship. And so when we were able, we newly gave the Mrs. Warren wanted to live, and we bought our house in 2006. We moved everything we owned into what turned out to be basically a bedroom, a room and a half of the house. You know, all our belongings fit in that room. And we sat on the floor of the deck, we could build furniture, because we didn't have any, and looked out, and, you know, this house, that's ours. For the cost of a couple six-packs and pizzas, we got some friends to help us with the rentals. And since then, we've tried to have a slightly more sophisticated approach to making our home what we need it to be for our now, those children, we now have three children, they were not even really an idea we had when we were sitting on that deck. And they're wanting more privacy and more sense of that celebration of the project. So make sure you're consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in favor? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Marion Haskins, three of our neighbors are from Quincy. And I've lived there 38 years. And these are, ever since they moved in, they've been great neighbors. And they all moved in up, so I don't really see, but all.
Very good, thank you so much. Anyone else? You can have a seat, sir.
I gotta speak in favor now, too, folks.
Feel like foul touch?
After those speeches, my, my heart is warm. It's a first. John Roy, 62 Grandwall Road. I mean, taxes are so high in the city that, you know, I think that people who pay those taxes deserve to build rooms for their families. So I'm in favor of this.
Josh Call?
No, that's the one that you gave me, yeah.
You could be then, then, right, please?
Diane Gardiner, 27 Reservoir Road, 42 Michael Bay, status. Upon my review of the architectural rendering, I can't see any problems or issues with the existing home, which would benefit the house. Have the space, I feel the decision for this project would fit in nicely with the aesthetics of the neighborhood and not overwhelm any existing homes.
All the time of hearing closed, I have a letter here from the DPW, May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, one thirty Reservoir Road, case number two eighty-two. To be reviewed, above preference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Last call, all the time of hearing closed. Any vote in favor, that's easy. Easy round.
All in favor as well?
In favor.
In favor? Yep. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, case ZBA twenty-two dash forty, Off the Grid Architects for finding to construct an addition over existing home on the premise number one thirty Reservoir Road Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. On the motion, seeing that all in favor? Aye. Close, go move. Brother under. Tonight's new business, ZBA twenty-two forty-two, Christine Francis for a finding to operate a residential commercial cleaning business at the premises three seventy-two Grand Street, the applicant representative here. Name and address for the record?
Cristal from Swat, three seventy-two Grand.
Is that your home address?
Oh, no. Twenty-eight zero five in Slashe.
Slashe. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Can I have a record?
Yeah.
Okay. You have the foreman, tell us what you want to do.
So what I want to do is to get a change away approval from this, so I can start running this.
Now, when you go up to three seventy-two Grand and you go in the front door, is that, you gonna have anything to do with the top of that?
Yeah.
Where the plumbing place is there?
Yeah.
Alright, so that's, this, my bother, I'm, I'm looking at the address. Now you, so you're gonna enter on Water Street. Issues in the bottom part.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I read this at home, and I didn't even realize Water Street is right there at the Connoisseur. The lease is for the brownie lady. Yeah, the lease, the lease is for Water Street, I thought it was Grand Street, and I'm going, alright, this is gonna be tricky. I, I gotta figure this out, and when I got there, I got the store right in the corner. But I thought with that address, you would've went in that way, that's all I was having. So I see the drawings there, maybe you can help us out, uh. On the drawing, you have. Draw on the back. I don't know who drew this, but. Want to tell us about that?
Yes, I'm, not that I'm drawing, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I just, I just want to know what's what back there.
Were you spraying?
Somebody can't breathe.
Alright, so there's a front door at the entrance.
Yeah.
Then.
On Water Street.
On Water Street, yes, four oh one.
Yeah.
And then once you get here, so there's one room, and then a second room, separate.
Okay.
Um, and then after that, there's a second door, so you tag those two doors.
Yeah, for an engine, you got, is it the white one?
Yes, the white one.
The white?
So we actually have two doors.
Yeah.
And, and then after, in the back, so you have two bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
And somewhere, um, you can just eat, you know, just one, one share and then just eat.
And then you got an office to.
Right, yeah.
That's great, okay. Alright, I have another question. Any questions? I just like to know the hours, what are your hours of operation during the opening?
So we're thinking about eight AM to eight PM.
Eight, eight AM? Is that for, um, walking customers? Yeah, they can buy.
Yeah, they can buy online too, yes, so they can go online and then just speak up.
Let's do it. Alright. Are you gonna be going out and doing all the cleaning yourself too, or just selling product?
So, yes, so we're gonna sell product and, so we're gonna do something else too.
So you'd be doing both, the cleaning, the residential, commercial business, and, alright, uh. What is, what, like, if you're doing commercial stuff, what are you coming back with, uh, equipment? You know, it's eight o'clock at night.
Right.
Residential areas.
So we store stock every time, because we are a small business, we're not doing a lot, so we don't just store a few. So when we come here, they make that money.
Yeah, yeah. So the store hours will be from eight to eight. You won't be coming in later, making all the way to put your stuff away in there.
Yeah.
So at eight o'clock, you'll never be back in that store that night. Is my question, anything?
Go, question.
About, uh, trash or stuff that you take from places that you clean, you have a disposal, you have somewhere to dispose of?
Yes. But you don't bring trash from, anything, so we do, so the client just offers some that, so we just drop that.
Okay. Alright, thanks, thank you. Thank you, can I have a seat? Does anyone want to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? All the time of hearing closed, I got a letter here from the DPW. Case number ZBA twenty-two forty, we reviewed its middle, its above preference project and have no comments. If anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone speak against or undecided? Second call? Third call closed, I'll be voting in favor, please.
Okay, in favor.
Yeah, can I have a motion, please?
Chairman, case ZBA twenty-two dash forty-two, Cristal Jean Francois for finding to operate a residential commercial cleaning business at the premise number three seventy-two Grand Street Quincy and make a motion to grant the variance.
Okay, on the motion, seeing that all in favor? Aye. Close, go move. Thank you. You're going to all? ZBA twenty-two forty-four, attorney Patrick Foley for variance finding to remove the existing storefront. Two-story residential, homey family house, and built six residential units and two commercial spaces with fifteen parking spots on the premises one oh six, one oh eight Franklin Street. How's the year up?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Patrick Foley, and I'm the attorney for one oh eight Franklin Place LLC. I'm joined here tonight by Brian Donahue, who's the architect for the project. Um, this project has already been approved by the planning board. We did two planning board meetings, we had multiple meetings with the planning department. Uh, we made numerous changes at that stage. We originally started off with six units and three commercial spots, and we dropped that down to, uh, to two commercial spots. The subject property is located at one oh six, one oh eight Franklin Street, it's in the business, B District of the city of Quincy. Um, currently there right now is a dilapidated three-family home with a smoke shop right next to it. But we're proposing to replace that with, tonight, if we're looking to replace that with six residential units, two commercial spots, and fifteen parking spots. I love Brian, uh, to go, to Mr. Walker, some of the designs for the building.
Good evening.
Why don't I sit from here? Uh, I, to get it on here, if you could slide that up.
Just move the mic over there.
Like, just slide it up, that's all you want. There you go. Can you people see this?
No.
Can you turn it and let them see it too, sort of spinning around, there you go. You guys see? Oh. Took you out of line. Maybe you can move that back.
That's alright, that's good.
He got it, he's got it.
I got it.
He's got it.
Alex did.
Alex.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, it's good to see you all, you're pushing again after all this time. Um, the project before you is the, uh, mixed-use development, uh, business B lot, uh, providing a residency, uh, resident B neighborhood behind the property on North Page. Um, right now, the property, uh, is improved, uh, use that term loosely, by, uh, four residential units depicted in this box here, um, you can buy us the property, you know, I have some photographs here. And, um, and a retail, a smoke shop here on the corner, uh, coffee break is over here, and then the, uh, barber shop is over there.
They got, too tall. Let's talk later.
So we have a, we have an existing non-conforming situation here, um, seeing as it is a business B with that, uh, residential use on the site, so what we're proposing is to continue that use, and to go from four units to six units. And to, um, increase the number of retail spaces, or commercial spaces, I should say, from, uh, one to two. Um, as, uh, attorney Foley mentioned, through the process of the planning, we, they request that we, um, bring it down to two commercial spaces, which we've done. So, um, just to remind everybody, for folks living in the area, know, um, that right now, right now, the building is, is, I would say, using the word light in this, in time, the buildings are certainly in need of improvement. Uh, we think that the best move is to raise those buildings and produce something new. In light of time, and the same mix of use for residential units and commercial spaces. So the proposal is to raise the building and build a six-unit condominium, these will be, these will be, um, for sale units. As well as the, um, retail spaces and commercial spaces will be for sale, aren't they? Um, they are, there are six units, we've got fifteen parking spaces, including the appropriate accessible spaces. The building is equipped with an elevator, some culminaries, got a grade level for storage for units above. So we're, we're seeing a relief on some of the setbacks, although, as you can see in the existing plan, the buildings that are there, um, are not conforming to some, uh, certain. So we also propose some, um, landscape improvements around the perimeter, fencing around the, the rises. It is a corner lot, but it's a little bit in our configuration, it's coming through, um, with, with barber shop there, so it's got a little bit of irregularity, but it is basically a corner lot. Um, the character of Franklin Street, as everyone knows, is, is, is commercial on the street level, and then goes into residential space in the back, so we think it's appropriate to live in this area and, um, not overwhelm the development for this, for this particular site. I won't get into, uh, excruciating detail on the layout, but the, basically, we've got a small basement space mechanicals, and we've got an entry lobby on the right, on grade level, storage areas, still partially parking underneath, and part of it is open to the weather on the back, on the back of the, of that. Twenty-foot setback in the, on the veer of the site, which is actually a sign, as we all know, and then it's another fifteen feet on the, on the right side. And then we've got, um, two retail commercial spaces totaling twenty-four hundred square feet, one is, uh, fifteen hundred, and one is, uh, two over. And then the, the given configuration, you take elevator up, um, are the six units, which are duplex units, or the living space, and bathrooms, kitchen, and so forth, and that next level, parking. And then internally, each unit is spare, the kitchen, which are two bedrooms, so they're all two-bedroom, two-bath, two-half-bath. So, um, we're trying to be sensitive to the residential character of the neighborhood down in North Paint, and as you get the time of retail, commercial spaces along Franklin Street. Um, the, the, this rendering on top depicts the, the one-story, um, retail space on commercial and North Paint, on Franklin and North Paint. Um, we're planning on using a couple of tones of gray to separate that use from the residential use in the back, to create that, um, event for building the rear, the house, six units, is, uh, traditional skip-style planning, uh, skip-style architecture with, uh, flowers and shingles and trend. Um, architecture of shingles, double-hundred, very, very, um, residential in scale. These are elevations, I think the, the rendering probably tells a bit more of the story than the elevation.
Do that just a little, so we can see that, maybe want to take a look at the print colors.
Yeah. Good night. Yeah.
You guys, so.
Flash that all the way around, what?
Yeah, yeah, letters, thank you. I'm just looking for the color.
That's from the North Paint side.
This is the North Paint side.
Correct.
This is it.
Right.
So I also want to emphasize that during the planning reviews, like, planning process, we had a whole metric, uh, plan presented to them, and, uh, so the only lighting, there's not gonna be any pole lighting in the parking, the only lighting would be under the parking area, which will eliminate the spaces that should drop in, uh, more amount of lights, that's the entryway, um, possibly we're thinking about some, some bushnik, uh, lighting fixtures for the retail space. On Franklin.
Franklin.
And they, and they enter, I just want to emphasize that they, they are entering those from, from Franklin Street, so there wouldn't be any folks who are using that commercial street wandering up in there. So, um, the building is, total square footage is about eleven thousand square feet, um, with a retail space, so it's not an overly large development. We think it's appropriate, and we have to get reasonable for this, for this site, so thirteen thousand, if you have a square foot of site in total. Um, and, uh, I think that, uh, that's about all I have to say for the project. If somebody has a specific Sunday architecture or site development, we have.
Some red things, is that gonna be purpose, that gonna be, uh, this? Question regarding the retail space parking, commercial parking.
Um, there are fifteen parking spaces, so by ordinance, there are a lot of people required to have one man's space per unit, doesn't it be? So we're allotting, um, nine spaces to, um, to repot the products, and the rest would be, uh, play by. And I think to answer a question that I'm anticipating, I would think in the evenings, if there are guests coming, those spaces that the retail, the commercial spaces are using, would be, uh, available to guests.
If someone wanted to enter the retail from Franklin Street, would they park in the back of the building? You have a compartment in the residential?
Um, well, there, there really isn't specific parking designated for, well, it's, we don't have, we don't have, uh, tenants or buyers who are using it, owners here representing the owner as well. So it, it could be, could be a variety of different users for those spaces, so, uh, there's a possibility it could be businesses like a real estate office or something where there's a lot of footshots.
So we have a right, I suppose.
So if they park in the back of the park, maybe it's supposed to go through the, the main building to get to the.
No, they would have to come out to, well, uh, actually, there is a little bit of an area. The parking back here, uh, would either have to come in here, out, or along the sidewalk.
So also to be owner-occupied to office, office spaces to, to all of the option of buying.
Any other, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you. Very well. Cardinals or, uh? Cardinals. All occupied.
The, the retail is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Everything's in your occupied there.
Thank you.
So two bedrooms, two and a half bath?
Thank you, gentlemen, uh, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call closed. I got a lot here from DPWs. We're reviewing and providing comments for this project to the planning board, all comments. All comments we provided have been addressed properly, and we do not have any further comments from the zoning board this time. All the time of hearing closed, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Please step forward, name and address for the record, please.
I agree.
I'm sorry.
I'm waiting behind you with the brush.
Um, my name's Chris, Christopher Ely, I live on North Paint Street, nineteen North Paint Street.
Just in case, I'm trying to put you on.
Christopher Ely, nineteen North Paint Street. And I guess just my concern would be traffic. Parking for the, for the retail, um, I don't see much out of fun. We don't know what type of retail it's gonna be, how busy they're gonna be, not busy, um, that, it's just to be determined, so, um, that's concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Ely.
Sydney, Bradley, fifty-two Independence Avenue, um, I'm concerned by anything that goes lot line to lot line with whole development and no green space. I'm up everywhere in the city, and some of the things that you. I walk everywhere in this city and some of the things that you all have approved in, like, Court Street are horrible. I mean, there's just no green space. So that's my only objection, is the extremely limited bit of green you saw on the side. Just, we've got a turn in Franklin Street, it's a wall-to-wall building, particularly with the drunky donuts thing that's going on across it and, and everything else. There's just no aesthetics that make it important for the city. Yeah, there's no green space here where people walk. That's my only objection. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Anyone else? Ava.
Good evening. Rick McGee, seventeen Edicott Street, one street in from the project. Just a few questions regarding traffic. I want to make sure I spread that very, that people exiting the building will be on Payne Street or they're exiting will be to Franklin Street? Since they're down at Franklin.
All the parking, the, the.
Okay. The other issue is my concern about the buildings with the drunky donuts. That's kind of, it's apparently going on at the same time.
I can, I can address that partially. My understanding is some donuts isn't even starting their process until August for the plan. So they'll be several months behind us. Uh, my name is Helen Shiner, by the way, I'm sorry. So I, my understanding is they'll be several months behind us from a construction perspective.
Another question is retail space that you're offering, is it offered? And I, again, I'm bringing another project into this, but the smoke shop, is that currently offered to the folks in retail space?
It has been offered to the smoke shop. They're going to look for a temporary placement. There's a potential place right across the street that they may locate temporarily to, but they have been offered one of the condos in the new, the new.
Actually, they, they said they're opening the fifty-two five.
That might be temporary or a real one, right?
It, it's potentially temporary.
Yeah.
And there's a couple of businesses being displaced across the street, the New York, New York's white family, the high school shop in particular.
They're moving to Franklin.
They're moving to Franklin. How far away? A place is.
One, one degree, very, very.
Yes, okay, I love that, alright, so that's.
They don't change their names?
I had potential to come on with them because I had a brilliant idea that they should go as a mommy lady. They'll co-locate together. The, the problem was with the greenery, they do a fantastic business, but they're seasonal. So they're not extremely appealing to the majority of, you know, landlords that are out there. So I proposed for the two of them a combination that something that they were considering. And that was about a month and a half ago, but I think we had the discussion with them. And hungry tummy, you may realize, so they're down at the ladies' now and they're going to close up the, their existing location of that individual shop.
Last question they have is rodents. When you, when you build a new project, you put.
Bales.
What's that?
The bales.
Yeah, you put the traps out and, and, maybe they keep scoring.
That's not my bad.
No, I'm asking out loud because.
Just a duka. Here we go. Any, any score on rats? I'm sorry, what? Why do I know if we need to keep the score on rats when we build new buildings and we. You know, the bales and hay and all that, the traps out, is, is it like, are we winning?
Yeah, we are winning. I don't think so, it's helped a lot that keeps scoring. They are winning, the rats, as you can probably guess from three years ago.
Kind of operations up.
That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Close mine aside. Sure, come on.
I have a question as well.
Sit here, may I say one more thing?
Yes, yes.
As far as, we have a compliance officer that checks all building sites in construction and one of the things that she checks on, you know, me, is right here. One of the things we check for is to make sure they have road control in place at all times before, during the project.
You didn't do nickname?
I'm sorry.
I was not getting reference. And then the one forty-three fifth, so this is about the traffic and setbacks. So North Payne already has a lot of traffic challenges. Is it all possible in this design to consider both an entryway to get to the parking for North Payne and from Franklin, because I think that would alleviate, North Payne has a significant problem right now. I know it might be a big change to the design, but it might be something that we would find quite a problem.
It certainly is impacted. What I would suggest possibly is the folks that are parking in the lot would be required to take a left turn only, so they wouldn't be going through the neighborhood and on.
No, the, the problem is people use North Payne currently as a cut through and people come onto North Payne to go like to coffee break, they then park at the fire hydrant. No one can see around them. And so people, you're going to be really close to our people who currently are parking when you're coming in and out. That's my concern.
There's no sign down there, no parking here.
Well, there's plenty of signs. There is, there should be another one next to the fire hydrant because they don't pay any attention to it, but.
Shot.
We know, because.
But it is, it is crazy.
Maybe you can just stop and drink coffee so it's fine.
I'll be two seconds.
Right, exactly. And then you try to come out, you can see nothing on Franklin Street. So that's why it's two.
You definitely have the morning rush, you know, and every time I've been over there, it's, it's quite busy here, you know, that's seven, that or.
And we walk a lot in this, as Cindy was mentioning, there's a lot of walking in the neighborhood. We want to be able to keep doing a lot of walking in the neighborhood, so we get to reach about the traffic as this.
One other point if I missed, I'm sorry.
I guess. The, the only suggestion we can make there is we can't control the budget if you keep bringing it up to your council or going to keep bringing it up to the police department and reporting, and I know this has become a pain and you think they ignore you, they don't, they just can't get to it all the time.
Put up the signs, I mean, maybe.
You counsel, talk to your neighbor, he lives over there. Counselor Andronic goes right around the corner.
This is actually Council of Fails.
Is it really?
Yeah.
This is that most weird spot, but he's, he looks like right behind us.
Yeah, it is, it is right on line.
Is there anyone else?
If I, this is one of those, like, that, that neighborhood always watches, then even like, like, the.
It is drawn strangely.
David McCarty is like, watches it too.
He does.
Hi, good evening, Adam Seckmore, thirty in North Payne. And in general, I sort of echo what is been said. The only concern I have is what type of retail goes in there and I don't know what control to be out of it or whatever, but between coffee breaks and drunky donuts, especially if it expands, if a Starbucks goes in one of those spaces. Yeah. Like North Payne is already between parking, just parking everywhere on both sides. In the morning, you've got the right side parking and then people, the, I won't be a second, so they park on the left side, it's zigzaggy. And then people coming through for the benefit of saving the lights by the seven eleven. So just my only concern was what type of retail goes in. If it's a real estate agent, no problem, if it's a, you know, whatever, but if it's a food service or if it's something like a Starbucks, that entire block is going to be more nightmareous than our.
Watch out, watch out.
I don't think they can, the council. Unless it's from the mayor, right?
But that's, thank you, that's my recommendation. The, uh.
Too small for that.
When you approve a new building like this with occupancy or a retail or office space today and then there's no, like, changed use, like, we see those all cut and they would have to come back, so how does that work in terms of a new building?
So if it's, if it's granted a retail, whether the decision that we made today.
Yeah.
So if a similar retail coffee or convenience store went in, if, if, if there was, if there was a changed use of the level of use, would that.
Slide my screen before. Wouldn't have worked. Wouldn't have worked. Anyone else else, second call?
Keep in mind, it's only less than a hundred yards from the Adams' birthplace.
I could just take two of your comments.
Ma'am, an address for the record, please.
Helen Shiner, twenty-three Poplin Street in Quincy. I just wanted to address two of the things that some of the neighbors brought up, Mr. Lee, being one of them. A lot of consideration was put into the proximity of the Adams' houses, when he designed the inside of this building, I think. Mr. Don, you did a fantastic job. Actually, it's three blocks. And then if we talk about the green space, I think it was kind of overlooked a little bit, but two of the townhouse units actually have rooftop space over the commercial. So they will have their outdoor space and then the remainder of the outdoor space to the right side of the building if you're on Franklin Street and has, does provide some. As far as the questions about the retail space, we are in communication and discussions with local businesses. So there may be a relocation of existing, of an existing building in that area and the other spot is held for, if the smoke shop wants to come back, we're going to give that, that consideration. So I think those were a couple of things that we may have glossed over a little bit. But the proximity to the birthhouses were really a big part of the discussion we had with different departments within the city and amongst our team. It was really important that we made something that was going to fit in that neighborhood, especially with the President's Trail, the major place and all the money that's been put into tourism. We didn't want something that wouldn't fit with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call? You want them at three?
Just, I'm hearing rooftop dads outside in the summer. Voices, noise, carrying in the neighborhood.
It's a possibility.
I, I'm just trying to say one thing. Okay, John Rortrill, sixty-two Ground Mall Road. I'm just going to say that before any business can come into the city of Quincy, they have to go before the license board.
Right.
And the license board does fabulous job in the city of Quincy. So I don't think the neighbors should have to worry about what businesses go in there because the license board will make sure that a business doesn't fit in there, today one, that one fits.
Thank you. While I finally, hearing closed.
Franklin Street's changing.
I'm, I'll be voting for. They're calling up the street one sixty.
Which is married.
Seventeen, twenty-seven, one, ten.
Years didn't have any development, so.
You're in favor?
I'm in favor. The, the, these took a nasty old bar on the changes in the retail, you know, they've done a nice job of it. I know that the barber shop is a big plus, this is going to be a big plus. As much as I hate to see it happen, I know it's changing. I'm going to be a factor with it.
Question for the architect. And just keep in mind some of the comments I made tonight about the, like, greenery in the front and also the closeness, publicability to the edge of the lot line. So the question I have, are you going to compromise the design substantially to build the building in front part back a few feet from where it is now? Could perhaps add, add greenery to that?
I mean, certainly, maybe it's possible, I think, that, obviously, obviously the person that is building is trying to maximize their investment in terms of square footage, so much is done moving the building. But I think, I think it's fair to say if you go down Franklin Street, most of the businesses are parking in the lot line. And then, and so I think it's, it's not unusual in that context for a building to be close. If you're out right on the lot line, pretty close. Most of the businesses that you go down either way are right, they're right there, so. I would, I would say that I wouldn't be the one to ask about moving the building.
We don't even have like anything, just that the back is, there's not much room at all out there. Little bit.
This is. We've got a, we have a green street here and this is sort of a colored one.
There's only a couple.
Barely green, actually. And we're, and that's getting into the question, so this is often enough. Yet I do have to show up to the building.
Yeah, I will.
I wasn't looking to move the building.
Vincent Greenup.
Window boxes, the window boxes were.
Now, the window box that is up on top, ten feet high.
I'm also assuming that could be chamfered the edge of the building on North Payne, I don't know Payne rather, that that will assist visibility for drivers coming down Franklin and so on, in the paint device.
And, and that's an entry to this corner store, the other store here, so there's no entry into any of the commercial states from.
So, but.
I, I think it's a market protocol, it's existing in today. I know it's, it's difficult except change, we don't do very long, but I think it'll be a benefit to that car there that makes something pretty nice there. Hopefully the traffic bump up there can calm down. I don't see it happening, but it's, it's citywide, so we try to deal with it as best we can. I give it time, but I'll be going in favor.
Have a moment, please. Have a moment.
CBA twenty-two, that forty-four, very passionate for a bad timing of the four hundred two residential, one community, but six residential. Two personal space building with fifteen parking spots.
On the motion? All in favor?
I like.
I oppose.
They're fine.
All in. Motion is good. All in favor?
I oppose.